Director Dan Hansen.
President.
Director Mary Boston.
President.
President Mark Swolick.
Here.
Vice President Val Cano.
Here.
Director Bill Hella.
Here.
All right, so at this point, we invite anyone to speak on anything that's not on the agenda this morning, if there's anybody who'd like to speak to some other issue.
I just want to introduce our partners that are up from East Bay Mud and San Francisco PUC that are helping, that are going to be sending forces Monday, and then San Francisco is going to be sending them at the end of June, and so Susan, David, and Antonio, correct?
Wow.
Those individuals are from, you're, all three are from East Bay Mud, right?
Yeah, Bill took off.
Oh, he took off?
Yeah, he'll be back.
Okay, San Francisco took off, but they're here getting an idea of what our recovery plan is doing, so that they can bring back that information, so the forces, when they show up on Monday morning, they're ready to hit the ground running, so.
Just go over who's coming, there's two mechanics and one locator coming from East Bay Mud on Monday, this upcoming Monday the 6th, working all week next week, two water system inspectors, samplers, and a supervisor who are going to be coming later in the week, Thursday and Friday, getting up to speed, and then will be here the following Monday, Tuesday, the 13th and 14th of May, following those mechanics, the meter mechanics are going to be putting the sampling manifolds in, so the samplers have to wait for the soak period before they start doing their sampling, so that's the East Bay Mud crew here the first two weeks of May, and then the first week of June, SFPUC is sending 12 plumbers in four trucks and two samplers, so a little bit bigger crew then, so as we kind of go through this, we talked about this pilot testing and kind of testing this protocol and everything else, we've started with PID crews and seen some success in the last week or two since I last spoke with you, now we're going to expand it with some mutual aid from East Bay Mud into a little bit bigger crew and try to get some more production, get some lessons learned from that, and then first week of June, get into a bigger crew from SFPUC and get more production and more building, so we're going through the process of the time I last had, with the support of these also approach from the bigger.
Wow, fantastic, welcome, thank you so much for the help, it's just great, really appreciate it. Excuse me, sir, can you stand closer to the mic, we have a little problem hearing you when, if you don't get closer to the mic, there you go, there you go, thank you.
Okay, I'm not used to one of these.
Thank you.
Our property's been cleared, we're just waiting for soil tests, and then we're planning to rebuild, our immediate concern right now is we have a lot of shrubbery and landscaping, and we're essentially disconnected, even though we're maintaining our service, and we know the water's not drinkable, and that's okay, we all have to just live with that, but we were interested if we could get our meter at least hooked up, so we could water our shrubbery, and that's our main concern right now.
Right, I totally get that.
Bringing buckets up from Chico, and it's a little hard to do this.
Right.
That's actually an agenda item that we'll be discussing later on in the agenda, so we'll answer your questions when we get to that point.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else, comments from the public? Okay, we'll go to new business here, and 3A.
So, I thought this would be good to kind of give a update to the board, you did see the email update that I sent out, the stuff we accomplished last week, the stuff we're accomplishing this week, and the pilot testing that we've done, Sammy has gone and did his magical math that he is really good at, and has come to some conclusions about what we're seeing with the contamination, the movement of the contamination, the risks associated with the contamination moving, to better suit our model of how we're going to go about the recovery plan for the most efficiency in getting people back to potable service, but also keeping public health and safety as our number one priority, and so right now what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Sammy for his presentation.
All right, so we're having some IT difficulties today, so I'm going to have to paint a picture of my words, which I can do, so we have something on the order of 400 samples taken, and of those 400 samples, roughly 30% of them have tested positive for, we're just going to talk about benzene, we talked about that last time, we tested positive for benzene, and 25% have tested over the MCL of those 400 samples, 33% positive, 25% over the MCL.
What is it, what's the 25%?
Over the maximum, over one microgram per liter, over the maximum contaminant.
Okay.
So somewhere between half and one, so they were detectable but not over the limit.
Okay, so 30% of what?
So 400 samples taken.
Yeah, I got that.
126 of them, 32% had benzene in them.
Okay.
99 of them had benzene over one microgram per liter, over one.
Okay, but then 126 of those, 99 weren't any good, so 27 were water, they could use the water.
27 were meth, MCL, but had it detect.
Yeah, but it's drinkable water.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, so 99 were over on the benzene?
Over the MCL, right.
Okay.
So bear with me for a little bit on some statistics, because it'll come into play when I talk about how we're using them, so we take all that data and we say, okay, what was, of the detects only, of the 126 detects that we had, what was the average, so the average detection was 33 microgram per liter, okay, and then we say, let's do some statistics, because we're, statistics are fun, 90% of the samples were less than 39 microgram per liter.
Less than what?
39 part per billion.
39.
90% of them less than 39.
So they're drinkable?
No, 39 is well above the limit, the limit's one.
One, okay.
90% of them are less than 39, and I'll get to why that's important in a minute. There's some other stats, 95% were less than 180, 99% less than 410, but the one I want to focus on is 90% of the samples were less than 39, the highest sample we saw was 923, and that was one sample.
923?
923.
And that's what can skew your average, when you have a little bit, yeah.
So the average is 33, the 90% confidence interval of the data we've seen, and remember, 400 samples now, out of probably 20,000 that we want to take at some point in the future, so we're into 2% of the system, so.
Still small.
Still small, all right, so these stats are convincing when you say them, but they're still based on a very small data set.
2% of what now?
2% of the total samples that we want to take have we taken, so we've taken.
Oh, two, you're talking about the total samples?
Eventually I'm going to stand here and give you stats about.
Okay, 2%.
Thousands of samples, we're at hundreds of samples, it's still statistically significant, but it's not a huge part of the system, so those are, those numbers, so what, what we are, to go through and do this testing, the last time I was up there, I talked a lot about this process of testing, isolating, stagnating, all those things, at the end of all that, we're getting data back, for instance, the high school came back non-detect.
Intermediate school.
Intermediate school came back non-detect, right, so we've got, you know, we're trying to get some data back, and now we have to make a decision as utility, is that water safe to drink, so we have, we have a lot of situations, and we will have a lot of situations, where we've tested an active service, we found that that water we tested was safe, but we haven't tested the adjacent services, and testing the adjacent services is a lot of work and a lot of time, right, so imagine a street, a tree can, one standing structure, nine burned houses, we can test the standing structure in a tenth of the time that we can test the nine burned structures, so we go, we test the standing structure, their water is clean at the lateral, and it's clean at the main, we take those two tests, now we have to decide, are we concerned that that water could get contaminated if their neighbors are contaminated, this, that's, this is the, as we're looking to, the decisions we have to make in the coming weeks, this is the crux of that decision.
Have you sampled any trailers?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm not sure it would be any different, whatever the service is at the end of the line, but there's somebody living somewhere, and we take a sample, and it's non-detect, and we don't know what's going on in the rest of the street, so we ask ourselves a question, can we do some science and engineering to determine if what's going on in the rest of the street matters to whether that water will remain clean?
Sammy, have you put together, I forget the name for it, but one sheet answer on how to take water samples and everything, we talked at the last meeting, the public meeting, it was brought up, and I think you were the one that said that would, that you would have that?
That's, if we can, let's let him get through this, and then we'll go through some of the questions and answers, and we'll get to that question after he gets through.
I'll keep asking questions, Kevin, that doesn't matter to me.
We just kind of want to make sure that we don't derail this.
So, no, I'll ask my questions when they come to mind, I don't have a short, I have a short memory sometimes, so if it's on my mind, boom, you're going to get it, one privilege of being a director, not many, but that's one.
Certainly, so, so we worked with the Division of Drinking Water to look at how they were answering that question, as they're looking at the same problems, we're all looking at the same issues, right, and they shared with us a model, there's two ways that contamination could travel from a neighbor's service into your service line, one would be if that sample moved by diffusion, so the water's all in the system, and the contamination's here, and it diffuses through the water and then comes up to your lateral, but the other way is if the sample moved by dilution, and that would be where somehow, under some condition, a depressurization condition, all of the water on your street and all your neighbors' water pulled together, mixed up, and then got redistributed, so we've got diffusion, where everything stays pressurized, and the contaminant slowly moves through the water, and we've got dilution, where it all comes together, mixes up completely, and gets redistributed, so this model looks at both of those possible conditions, and we looked at a scenario where you have 10 services, you test one, and it's non-detect, the other nine you don't test, and you assume they're all contaminated, and you assume they're all contaminated at the 90 percentile of what we've measured, at 39 microgram per liter, so if everything else on the block is contaminated at 39 microgram per liter, and the main in the middle of the street is on the smaller side of what you have in your distribution system, it's a four inch, so a four inch main, and nine contaminated houses, you've just measured the one, and then you say, okay, what would happen by dissolution, could you get contamination by dissolution, and the amount of contamination that would have to be in those other houses is astronomical to get to a dissolution contamination of the one house, if they were really at the 39, and it over-dissolutioned through a four inch dead-end lateral that's not moving, the one house would read .0002 parts per billion, completely non-detectable, like way beyond non-detectable, so dissolution, regardless of the size of the main, seems to be an issue that we can get comfortable is, we can say that if we test one house and it's clean, and the main's clean, that even if the rest of the street's dirty, that we won't have a problem of dissolution from those adjacent, or diffusion from the adjacent laterals into the one house, depressurization, and mixing, and redistribution, if we have 39 microgram per liter, that 90 percentile, again, four inch main, dead-end street, it's .5 microgram per liter, which is non-detect, so you would still get a non-detect, so that's a 90 percentile, so if we take it to the 99th percentile measurement, which is 410 microgram per liter, and we do the same thing, we would get five microgram per liter, and if there was a four inch main, and we would get about two and a half microgram per liter in a six inch main, so we would get the potential for, if a system depressurized, everything on that street was at 410 microgram per liter, other than the one clean house, mixed up, and went back out into the system, you would violate the state standard, not violate the federal standard, not that that is, I mean, our job is to meet the state standard, but just to give an idea of the level of possible contamination, and that would only happen if the other samples were all at the 99th percentile of what we've measured so far, so there is an outside chance that if we don't measure everything else on the block, and we take that one house, and we say, this is clean, and the main is clean, that we could have contamination that would get distributed in the event of a depressurization, mixing, and redistribution, the good news is, there's already a standard by which PID deals with depressurization events, because honestly, the risk that really happens when a depressurization event occurs, is that there's a contamination with Giardia, or crypto, or some kind of bacteria, right, because now we're pulling in stuff from the environment, so already, if a depressurization event occurs, the system is flushed, there's a whole process that has already gone through, it's tested, and if we add a test for VOCs to that procedure, then we can satisfy ourselves that we haven't brought recontamination back into that house, so that's kind of where we are going, and I wanted to put that out there, just to let you know the thought processes, again, this has been done in conjunction with DDW, and they support the approach that we're taking, which is good, and I just wanted to get, report that, and then if there's, I guess input is probably allowed, obviously no decision, because this is just a reporting thing, but if there's input from the board or anybody else, I'm happy to take that.
What's a DEW?
The Division of Drinking Water, but what used to be the Department of Health Service.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, so what other than events would cause the depressurization episodes to occur, with the exception of what we just experienced in the campfire, so just in normal service repair?
The most likely thing right now is one of the cleanup crews breaks a main.
Okay, so that's a great example.
That's probably happening, it happens, now, that has to cause complete depressurization, but I, if somebody breaks a main and you have a big gusher.
Yes.
That leader will, you know.
Depressurize, okay.
And then you've got to go repair it.
And then you would flush.
Flush, test.
So staff would be following that process that we already have in place?
And we already have in place, we make every attempt when we're doing leak repairs to keep possible pressure on, even if it's just lower flow, choke the valve down something, but we always try to keep lower pressure, it's a pretty big main break to depressurize.
Okay, thanks.
Sammy, would it be worthwhile to try to prove the computer model you're talking about here, in other words, just taking an example house on a certain street, just, just for the heck of it, you know, and take the samples, spend the money, spend the time, take some samples, and then just back up your computer.
Trying to think of what to use for the contaminants, right, so.
Right.
We're trying to prove that if everyone, all the neighbors are contaminated, we'd have to use some kind of a tracer to act as the contaminant, we're taking these sort of outlier conditions of mass contamination of the streets with no contamination of the standing structure, which.
You don't want to contaminate.
Michael Lindquist, he was just making water repairs.
Sure, yeah.
So Michael and I were talking, and he brought up NASA's rules about how many ifs you can have before you have to stop doing a scenario, right, so we're taking.
Right.
Outlier scenarios for contamination levels, and outlier scenarios for contamination, everything else being contaminated, in sort of an unlikely scenario that the whole block is contaminated except the standing house.
Right.
You know, trying to simulate that in the field, I think is a little tricky.
So I have one more question, so if you were to proceed with this theory, then what would it ultimately look like for the speeding up of the repair process timeline?
So if we were to proceed with this theory, what it means is, we have probably somewhere around 3,000 tests to take instead of 20,000 before, and it also extends the, potentially extends the duration of testing, where we can wait to test the lines to a burned-out lot until someone wants to build or put a trailer on it, or whoever wants to occupy that in some way, that's the, if you put it into the bigger picture of how it impacts the overall recovery, it's a very strong positive impact on our ability to support faster recovery.
Great.
Now, you're saying 70% of the 400 samples taken were not, were clean, right? I want to emphasize that, because we had a news release that ended up saying we poisoned everybody, and a 30%, and they didn't hardly mention the 70%, and it was such a negative thing all over the country, and I thought.
Shocked the news got it wrong.
Yeah, they, they sound newspapers that way, yeah, I had a guy call me from New England for ABC and start asking questions, and I said to him, you know, you should talk about the 70% that's clean, and not the 30%, I said, nobody seems to mention that, and everybody's scared up here about their water supply, and we need to emphasize the positive on this for our customers won't be so upset, people are really frightened right now in the district about their water supply, and making all sorts of rumors fly like they usually do, so I would like us to say, if we can somehow, that 70% with under the sampling system we've gone so far are all right.
And I think we're still behind the town hall for.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, the town hall, we can certainly do that if we can, we can all be presenting similar information, as I'm talking about today at the town hall, and with some graphics and some things like that, I wanted to give this in front of you before I go up there, so today I don't have as much presentation material as I normally would like to have, but a lot of this is developing as we.
So just why we are here today is to get initial buy-in, that the science behind what we're trying to accomplish, everybody agrees with, if there's questions, we wanted the questions to come from you guys first, before we got it bombarded from the public, and based on the science that we're looking at, this will speed up the recovery, so as you go through, you will basically be, you know, the town, based on clearing of areas, will be plaid, right, it'll be all over the place, so we're going to be bouncing property to property, so instead of clearing zones or clearing streets, we're going to be clearing individual structures and properties as we go forward, and that's going to be the focus of how we go about this, that will not only speed up the recovery process, but it will help support PID in not having to go out and getting 50 crews to try to get this accomplished in a certain amount of time, to service the person at the bottom of town, or to try, it will loosen up the ability for us to reach out and get mutual aid up here to help us work through this, if it takes five years for somebody to come back and rebuild on their property, well, that gives us five years to go back and test their property, right, so it gives us that ability to work slowly through the recovery process, but have a lot of efficiencies through the recovery process, so this is a huge benefit for us to give back to the public as our recovery plan going forward, at that May 14th meeting or before, that we can come to that May 14th meeting, and if the theory is behind, if that theory is good, and what we're saying is good, then that tells us that we're going to clear structures before that May 14th meeting, and we will have structures cleared that says, you're good, you're good, you're good, you're good, and then we're going to have an ability for us to prioritize, but also list out people for them to go forward to get cleared, we can then schedule those people, it'll be like the brake cleanup, right, go to your property, go to your property, and go to your property, that's kind of how we will structure and prioritize people, and then our next question will be, not for today, but then how do you prioritize people, who's, who's, who's the priority on the list, how do we go through there, how do we clean them, how do we get them good, and then how do we move down the list, so we just wanted you guys to have that buy-in that says, we agree, science is good with us, and that's what we're going to move forward with.
And of course, there's always going to be outlier conditions, right, and part of this has to always be some judgment on the part of the PID staff and the consultants about the exact locations of the testing, and what the distribution system looks like in that area, so part of this also is, we're using the hydraulic model, which was developed before we came onboard for this project, but we've taken it and now sort of owned it, and we have a person in our firm who's running the hydraulic model, and the first thing, when I got back through the folks room, a text from Michael that said, hey, the high school and the intermediate school both came by non-detect, I called Cindy, and I said, Cindy, tunnel velocity is under normal conditions on the pipe, and how big is the pipe in front of those stools, and we looked at that to see is the water moving in front of those stools, and then we're working on having that model in place for just the current demands, so that's, in the next few weeks, going to be available to us as a tool, so that we know with some level of estimate, what the flows look like in the system now versus what they look like when they were 10,000 structures standing, and we can look at a site and say, okay, we just got the sample, it's non-detect, we don't know anything about the neighbors, but we do know it's being fed off of an eight-inch main that's moving at 100 gallons a minute, so that gives us another comfort level, that we can say, hey, this is, this is not a stagnated, whereas there may be a house out there that's at the end of a long, dead-end, two-inch main, that we might not feel nearly as comfortable clearing, just because of the nature of the hydraulics around that house, and that might require more testing to get around it, just to sort of satisfy ourselves, so no matter what you do, if you want, in a short presentation like this, I'm oversimplifying and giving examples, there's always going to be some things where we're going to have to use the judgment of the staff here, and the consultants, and sort out whether we're all comfortable with clearing house or not clearing house, there's a little more of those, but we just wanted to present the general concepts.
It sounds like you finally have something that's going to work.
It's, it's all about a sort of comfort level with the approach.
What does this do to your two to two and a half year estimate, your work estimate?
So remember, the two and a half year estimate was clearing the whole area, right? So really, this means that the whole area might be cleared in five years, right, that last lot that's going to be developed might be five years, right, so, so it doesn't, it doesn't shorten the clearing of everything, it shortens the clearing of the most critical, right, so you're focusing on the most critical things, and then you're able to then do the work which helps financially us survive, because we're doing permanent work that maybe our crews can do, that we're not having to sub out to get done today, right, so, so it's a, it's a, it's a bang, it's a win-win on both sides, so, so from a timeline standpoint, that's going to be a standing end about what kind of, what kind of crews we get in here on the initial push, to see how quickly we can get things done through this process, but that, from a critical standpoint of, I have a standing home, when am I going to get water, speeds it up tremendously, and I want to go back to Bill's point, is that we had a plan, that plan would work, that plan would work, it was a good plan, it was a basis for what we've created today, and so the work done on that initial plan is why we have what we have today, right, so as a carpenter, and Jim says this, and my dad said it too, is that you measure twice, cut once, well, we're measuring about seven times, so that we cut one time, right, there's been a lot of work done on measuring and measuring, and I think we finally got to the point where we've measured it down to the lowest common denominator, which is that parcel, that's our normal, that's our biggest thing, is to clear that parcel, and I think we finally got there.
In support of all this, also, we're exploring some different funding approaches with FEMA that might allow us to avail ourselves of the money over a longer period of time, so that's in parallel with this, the funding, so there's a program, we're working with CalOES to maybe try to restructure our approach, that we can avail ourselves of a longer duration of funding.
So Sam, this is based on, this theory is based on a 2% sample, and so if we hit a 5% at this approach, and that skews, the testing starts to come back more significant numbers, positive, then we're going to pivot, right?
For sure, but remember, our 2% sample said that we have 33% of the samples coming back detect, and 25% of the samples coming back over the MCL.
Right.
And in our model that we use to try to determine what would happen on a particular block, I said, everything is contaminated, other than the one we tested and know about, so we took a pretty big conservative jumper, I didn't say 25% of the houses, because in my mind, when I, what I've seen of the data, the neighborhoods that are contaminated have multiple contaminated sites, it's, those conditions happen for all the houses in that block, you look at the lead caster area, you look at, you know, different things that, so even though the overall data would suggest only 25% of the houses are burned, if you go to one particular street, there's a decent chance, if there's contamination in one house, that it could be in the other houses there that you haven't tested, so that's why I So, that's why it just basically in the modeling said, the house we tested is clean, everything else is dirty. And that's, that, that is a conservative step. So, even if we start coming back with that twenty-five percent above the MCL is really thirty or forty percent, it doesn't really change that because I already took that.
Into consideration, okay.
Sammy, is the Purdue team on board with this approach?
I have not talked to anybody yet. I certainly could and see what this take is.
Be kind of nice to hear what they have to say since we started with them, so to speak.
Yeah. I've had a number of conversations with him, I have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Information on the item, so no, no need for anything from crew, public. Yep, absolutely.
If you can come up to the podium, yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm Billy James, I'm a Paradise resident evacuee. My concern is, um, a lot of my friends left the community, they're not coming back. The water was a big issue for them. In my thinking, I'm thinking, okay, well, when the water's good, we'll build. So, it, it feels reversed, it feels like if you've got a building, then we'll check your water. So, there, there's risk there. So, we put money into a home. How long does it take to, and I, I know it's generalized, to get clean water? And, um, what kind of risk are we taking putting money into a home and then we find out our water is not clean?
Sammy, Sammy's wanting to answer that.
So, uh, that, that's, that's the question of somebody pulling in the building permit, essentially. And there are twenty-five, uh, at the last I checked, building permits for houses, there were thirty-some odd, thirty-five that were for other, tentative for other things. Um, and I think in general, uh, the approach would be to treat the building permits that are pulled, um, in, in a similar fashion to a standing structure. So, if somebody decides to build on a lot and starts the process and pulls a building permit, in the time period it will take to get a permit and construct the structure, we will have had enough time to test the service lateral, determine if it's clean or not. If it isn't clean, replace it so that by the time you're ready to move in, you'll have clean water at that house. So, we should be able, if we take this approach, to support new construction at, in the same timeframes as the, as the, um, building department.
So, would we have a filter then, you know, those, those filters that people are getting or?
PID deliver potable water to the meter. The choice about whether to put a filter on houses is a bit of a homeowner decision, right? But.
We're, we're saying, we're saying that the water will meet all state standards once we, once we certify.
Hi, my name is Paul Weber. Uh, I have a home up, actually neighbor to your council, Dustin Cooper, but it's a standing home and, um, my question is, and it's probably more, I don't know if you have an answer for it, but at an earlier meeting, um, you know, there was conversation about some temporary interim water supply for standing homes because the potable water issue was probably a year or two years down the road. I think all of us that have standing homes are, are trying to figure this out. Will insurance pay for something? Should we wait, uh, on the district? Should we do it ourselves and bring in a tank and a pump like some businesses have? I suspect that if you're, if you were talking two years or a year and a half to get potable water to standing homes, then a temporary solution would be pretty important and necessary for the rebuilding process. Whereas if this, uh, this process which sounds great, it's more like four months, five months, six months, then your thought process is probably going to change dramatically. I mean, why would you spend the money on tanks when it's only a few months? And I understand that. But it would be great to have clarity on that and you may not have that clarity right now in terms of the timeline and then what would you do? Uh, but again, if it's a two-year thing and you're expecting people to wait, I think that's really not acceptable. Uh, if it's six months, maybe it is. Can you, has that conversation come up? Can you speak on that topic?
Do you want to speak around me?
About the timeline?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I, I, I mean.
And, and you can caveat this. So, the timeline is based on what they, right? If you come to a standing structure and that main line is contaminated, then we're in a different ballgame, right? Then we are looking at for temporary water services for that. And it doesn't mean that there would be a tank per se. There might be a way that we could get other water from a different area that we know is clean to be able to draw that over to that person. So, it doesn't, temporary water doesn't just mean tanks. Um, from a, from a timeline standpoint, we do feel like it's going to be less than two years for standing structures, right, Sammy?
So, so, there are a couple, a couple of things. What, what, we have tested dozens of standing structures at most out of the fifteen hundred and we found most of them are non-detect. But if we start getting detections in standing structures and we start having to replace laterals, it will slow down the process considerably. And, and if everything goes right and all the standing structures are clean and we agree that the, this approach, although there is a small amount of risk in ways, it's, it's small enough that we're all comfortable that it's okay, if we move forward and everything goes right, you're, you're correct in that, you know, that type of, type of. Um, but I, I would be very hesitant to, to stand in front of the whole community, which I am right that video's on, and, and say, hey, you know, by, um, Christmas we'll have everybody back in water, right? Because it, it's not, it's not, uh, it's not that simple and we might get into parts of the system that we haven't seen yet and we don't know the date of it. So, I, I, yes, I'm, I'm an optimist and, and I love to say optimistic things, but I also am an engineer and, and so trained for years and years to say the, just the facts. And so, hopefully, that's, that's, you know, yes, hopefully that's the kind of time period we're talking about. And that's, that's been our goal. We understand the impact to the public of being able to do this quicker and that's what we've been doing for like eighteen hours a day for the last six weeks is figure out how to do this quicker. And so, we're hoping, we, we feel like we're about waiting, we got a chance of doing it quicker, but, but we can't say, hey, yeah, we'll, we'll be done by this date, not yet, until we start. Really seeing things about, you know, how much production can we get using mutual aid and, and we think we can do well. And we had a very positive meeting day with our partners in the Bay Area and that, that's outstanding. We'll see if we can, we can get some, you know, a lot of samples in and a lot of places tested and, and start to see what we get for production rates and start to predict how, how fast we get through the whole system, but, but we're not quite there yet to be able to say, yeah, it's a process, hopefully.
I'd like to comment on this.
Go ahead.
I, I live in a camp trailer and my burnt-down house has not been cleared. It's right next to the camp trailer. Uh, my contractor tells me I'm not going to have to move my trailer when they come in to clear the lot. Any rate, at the Nazarene Church, they have a tank that we provide water for and they also have bottled water there. I go up to the Nazarene Church, I have these little containers, they were on Craigslist yesterday for twenty dollars a piece, a barrel, holds about sixty gallons. And they're, and I go up there and fill it with the bulk water that's come from the water treatment plant that's clean. Fill two of those and I take about six of the bottles up there and fill it with the bulk water. But they're all in the back of my pickup and I go back down to the house. My son and I figured out, just went down to the trailer supply company and they have little, they're only this big, they're little pumps that run off the battery in your pickup. So, I hook that thing up, hook it to the spigots we have on the barrels and we pump water into the trailer. And then we empty one barrel, we put it up on the patio and then we put the, empty the other barrel into it and the last, the water in the other one will fill the barrel. Since I'm a bachelor, it lasts about five days. I take a shower every day in good clean water. I use this good clean water to cook with, wash my dishes, brush my teeth and all of that. And I don't know why other people cannot do this. How much did it cost? Hundred and twenty dollars for the pump and the barrels. So, and you just need a pickup or somebody's trailer. And we've got it at the water treatment plant. I went up there and Bill was nice enough to come by and visit one day when I was there, helped me fill up the, I didn't know about the bulk water at that time, uh, the things and then I pour them into the barrels by hand and so forth. It was really nice to have a spigot and it goes in. And we're working on putting one in midtown that will be able to fill trucks with water. Uh, it's having to pass some FEMA regulations, I understand. Uh, I'd love to see that thing put together where people could take, uh, things that might even cut down the costs of these trucks that are hauling potable water around town because they could buy it locally from PID if we put a meter on the supply. And the stuff I'm picking up at the Nazarene, there's no charge. They might ask you for your name. So, these things are there and you can do them yourselves or have a friend who's handy with a little bit of plumbing. You go to the, one of the parts houses has trailer stuff and so does ACE now. You can go in there and buy the special little white pipe that keeps the water clean. You don't use a regular hose, you use this because it won't get all the tastes out of the sunlight burning on the hose. And you can hook it all up and it takes me about a half hour with that small pump to fill the trailer up. And so far, we've graduated from just actually pouring, uh, the containers into the trailer through a funnel. That's how I started. So, we've gone down and now it's the quickest I drive up to the top of the deal. If I'm lucky and nobody's in line with me and I fill up and twenty minutes later, I'm down back to the house with my water supply for ten days or seven days, depending on how many showers I take. I'm a bachelor, so a couple of times a week I don't bother with the shower. But these are things we can do right now. You don't have to wait a month for this. You can just go out and do it and talk to some people. If you need more water than that, you could probably get a bigger tank or more of those barrels that they want twenty dollars a piece. There is a problem with the barrels, so you make sure to read what they had the last time. One of my barrels had hot sauce in it, it turned out. And so, it took a time for the bitterness to go out of it.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, there are some simpler solutions out there is what you're saying, yeah.
Lauren Harvey. Uh, I got a couple of things I'd like to say. Met tags, where met tags used to be, all of us people that are in town a long time know where that is, they got two-hundred gallon, brand new ones that are just a shade over a hundred bucks. So, anybody could haul one of, that's about the max you could haul in a pickup, but you could haul that. And like he says, any RV place has got a twelve-volt pump. If you really want to be green earth, you could get yourself a solar panel for another twenty and you'd have it all done. But, but, uh, that's not why I stood. The reason I stood is because these short streets and say you've got a house down, say you're the eighth house down the service line from the, from the street. It's a dead-end service, so the guy eight, eight houses down there, his, he wants, he wants water. Looks like to me the practical way to do that would be to bleed, start at the head of the service, bleed them for say like a hundred gallons, just out on the ground, blow it out on the ground there at, at the broken meter, just blow it out. And then, and then work your way down just like you bleed a car. You know, you bleed the brake system on a car, you start closest to the master cylinder and you bleed it back. Everybody knows it's pretty practical. And so, it looks like to me, before you'd want to test that man's water, the eighth guy down, you would want to bleed those other seven just to make sure that there wasn't going to be any, any, say one day you had fifty pounds of pressure there and, and, and the next day you got forty-five pounds, for whatever reason, it would back a little bit of water out. Now, everybody knows water's solid and it's not like air, it don't combust, so of course it don't, uh, compress. So, so of course, uh, everybody knows it'd be a very small dribble if it come out of there, but I'm not saying it's not. But I'm just saying if you wanted to be sure, that's how you would do it, I think. The other thing is, the man said, well, he couldn't think of what, what he could do to, to test a theory about the, uh, the parts per million on the thing. Well, I got an easy one for you, food coloring. Food coloring is, is, uh, you can eat it, you could put it, you could put a little bit in a, in a, in a line somewhere and you could test your theory with food coloring. And so, I think that's what you ought to investigate because it's, it's a food quality product and you can, you can use it in the water without any trouble at all. The guy down the line might yell when he gets blue water, but, uh, it's not going to hurt anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Uh, thank you for that explanation, but I would like to reiterate if I could, uh, for you guys is, the six months or two years is really critical. I mean, and it would, as much as you can, once you know and if there's way you can get that information out, that would be helpful because, um, again, I think, you know, in my situation, I can probably get by for six months. And another gentleman earlier talked about landscaping and things like that and, and we're going through the summer, so, you know, but if it's a, a year or, or a year and a half, then we're looking at another summer and, and that'll be just so much more difficult. So, um, what you could do to communicate that, just so we know. I mean, I don't expect you to like force it through and do it quicker than it should, but, but so we know. In my situation, I've, I've got a tank, I have it on a little trailer, I have it on a Jeep, I drive all around filling up water. I've been to the Nazarene Church, I've been up in Megalia, I've been here and picking up water. Um, I appreciate your suggestions and ideas, but I really don't think that's your role as a board to tell us how to get around a system that is a failure right now. We're all self, pretty self-reliant up in here in Paradise, we can figure out things. So, we can do that. If you want to give those little suggestions, that's great. But I hope that wasn't meant to be like, you guys need to do it on your own because we'll get around to it when we can.
Not at all.
That's, that's not your role. Your role is to fix the problem.
You're not, you're taking it too far.
Not to give me suggestions.
No.
On how I can get around.
It was not intended for that.
Can I finish, sir?
No.
You're going to interrupt me?
Yes, I do this all the time.
Bill, Bill, let's let him finish.
So, I'm done, I'm not going to engage right now, but I just want to make that point. That's, that's great, little hints, tips, fine, but I hope you're putting your efforts into a solution, not, uh, not these hints and suggestions.
That's only my effort. It is not, I'm not speaking for the district with what I said about my own situation.
Thank, thank you, Paul.
I thought it was pretty well done by the way I spoke.
Bill, excuse me, if, if you just stay tuned, I think as this gets rolling along, we're gonna, we're gonna stay.
I'm gonna answer.
Oh, go ahead.
So, May fourteenth, we're gonna have that outlook meeting. We should have some good ideas of how quickly we're going about this. We should see some results back on that, on if we're running into, and, and Sammy is, you know, you're just giving that pessimistic side, I'm more on the optimistic side of thinking, things are going to roll pretty smooth through this process of, of the detects. Um, we're going to focus on people and, and priority is going to be standing homes, but, but people who are living there, right? Not just every standing home, but the, the people that are living there. So, you're living there right now, um, you actually are disconnected from the system right now. You're actually a really good candidate right now. So, we're going to get in touch with you right now. Uh, so, so we're, we're hoping that things will go smoothly. The other thing too is, May fourteenth is not our last meeting, right? So, we're going to continue to update the community on our progress and where we're going forward to make this as easy a process as possible. And we are sensitive as a district to people's struggles. We are very sensitive to that and, and the next agenda item is actually kind of focusing on that struggle too, to understand that people need water, people need those type of things and we're, we're, we are very sensitive. So, keep in touch with us and we'll try to keep in touch with you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the update? Like I said, um, you know.
Oh, I could come back to the one, the protocol we talked about at the last public meeting, you're going to have a protoc, protocol on sampling water.
Sampling from inside a person's house, is that what you're talking about?
I, I don't know where it was. You said you'd have a protocol for people if they wanted to take their own samples, how they should take the samples.
Yeah, so that is being provided or worked on by this.
Plumbing group.
Plumbing working group that.
I can, I can update you on that. The, there is a plumbing task force that is meeting, um, that DDW, EPA, county, everybody is involved in this group to figure out how to instruct individuals to how to test their internal plumbing. Um, our standpoint and it's always been our standpoint is that we let things stagnate for seventy-two hours before we test. And so, that's always been our, our standard. We have not, we, and we are not going to put out standards of how to clear a standing structure, um, at this point. We're hoping to partner with them so that maybe they can, they can have details of how to take samples based on what our sample is outside on their meter side. So, we're trying to work with them so that there's an, an, an ability for an individual to take samples and be comfortable with that samples. But we're not the ones that are writing the policy for that. Um, we're looking for a DDW actually to be the lead on that. Um, there's private organizations out there that are trying to take the lead. There's private organizations out there that are trying to take the lead, including Purdue. And there's also another organization that is looking for grant funding to do 150 structures within the burn area to do a sampling for that portion, too.
I can't remember who that is, but they are working with the vision of drinking water.
And oh, what's that one? The...
Oechscha.
Oechscha? Oha?
Oeha.
Oeha.
Office of the environment.
They're involved in that. We're pushing them to get these standards out, but you can only push so hard before you run into a brick wall. So, Wednesday, I've heard that they were supposed to bring them out.
Part of it is that it's being debated which agency should issue them. So, county health feels like it should be DDW. DDW feels strongly it should be county health. But, we have the Office of the environment also had an assessment. It was not their role. There's a little bit of a...
We do have legislation to support that to push DDW into making these decisions.
Thank you for your answer.
Great. Thank you, Sammy. Appreciate the information. Thank you.
Okay. I think we can get through the next two before lunch.
Okay.
Maybe.
Item B.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay. So, the next one is interim water supply. It's a policy of cost associated with the interim water supply. This is for irrigation and for construction water, for backflow installation for those individuals to get water back on their parcel. Jim has been the lead on this and I'm going to actually turn it over to Jim to explain the details behind it.
So, the interim water supply addresses a lot of issues, I think, with sampling and the recovery and meeting our customers' needs. And it allows PID crews to get back to the business of serving our customers. And so, we built an apparatus. It's a temporary backflow preventer with a hose bib connector that can be used. And we have various sizes. 1-inch would be the minimum, inch and a half and 2-inch. So, we could serve the largest of the residential meters and provide ample water for even watering orchards, gardens, simple landscape that was preserved around burned parcel. So, it can be used for a number of things, for construction, for lock cleanup, for mixing the concrete, cleaning the paintbrushes. We can potentially couple it with sampling of that particular service line when we're there if we are able to accomplish that at that time. And it allows us to protect the public drinking water system from potential contamination past or on the parcel that's there, which, right now, there are more than normal, especially unknowns or potential hazards out there. There's always been hazards associated with construction and we've long since had policy that states we need backflow prevention methods installed for construction use. Now, we're looking at it as perhaps combining the construction water use into the interim water use so that we can even provide water to completely destroy parcels that simply need lawns watered, roses, vines, trailers. If we're able to say that that water is good or sample that service line and do what we would do in the normal recovery, then we have that benefit with this right here.
You didn't mention 3/4-inch lines?
So, I didn't mention a 3/4-inch line because the reason we stopped at 1-inch is that these backflow devices can actually potentially be used for the permanent backflow that would be installed in the new service, at the new permanent service. We have to use a 1-inch minimum there, so you can't use a 3/4. It wouldn't meet the flow requirements for a fire sprinkler system. So, since the customer's paying for this, if we can reuse that, then we want to have the one that we would literally assign to it at that point and use it again permanently. So, there wouldn't be no second cost associated with that.
My service is 3/4-inch. It's 50 years old. That's interesting. I'd have to replace it to a 1-inch line when I rebuild?
It's possible. It's possible that we'd have to turn that into a 1-inch line.
Awesome.
I wouldn't guarantee that that's the case, but it's possible. We have to flow test it and see what's there. And then, the sprinkler designer would say, "Yes, we can do it here. We may have some upgrades that we deal with. We don't know about that yet." That's another issue that we can talk about as we progress with the recovery. But, a flow test would determine whether you would be able to use that 3/4-inch line.
Well, I've got about 60 or 80 pounds of pressure.
Yeah, the pressure's good down there, right? So, that's a benefit.
Yeah.
But, remember the volume and if it's galvanized, if it's 3/4, it could literally be a half-inch ID. So, but you have those issues, but it's possible.
I've got five calls this week. I don't have the meter. I want to water my roses. Who do I call? How do I order and what's the weight?
And that's what we want to do right there. We want to give them that interim water.
Do you have an answer?
You call...
How do I order?
You call the office. Service order will be created. The service order will go up to the shop based on our workforce.
What's the current weight?
So, well, we don't know that yet. We don't know what the workload is and we need to see when they come in, right? So, and I know Mickey's working on it, right? Because there's a cost associated with it. So, we would need to receive payment and then we need to look at that and say, one is, and in most cases, we have water on the water main, but if we don't have water on the water main or we have a damaged area, something that we need to fix, that could take a little longer to get to, right? So, we need to get out in a queue.
I don't know is a good answer because you don't know, but people just want to know, "How do I get this thing started?"
Yes.
I thought of the website. Is there a...
Mickey's going to communicate it and it's being communicated right now. So, Mickey's going to communicate it. And today, depending on your answer here, right, is how we communicate that.
Okay.
If you approve it, then it's a service order. It's a payment and then it's a scheduling.
Okay. Good.
Jim, are we going to all one standard-sized meter? In other words, a 1-inch and then you're just going to reduce down like for Bill's service, let's say, if it's a 3/4?
So, the meters, the meter size won't change. We'll still be using, although our minimum will be a minimum true 3/4-inch meter. We'll still have, the meter sizes will still be the same.
Oh.
3/4, 1, 1 and 1/2, 2.
So, you still have different sizes?
Or 3 and 4, depending on where you're at. It's the backflow in the fire system that determines what... I'm sorry. It's the fire system flow that determines the meter size and the backflow size.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Is there charge from the meter, too? My meter's gone.
We're not going to... The meter will be covered under our FEMA reimbursement.
Okay.
Right. We're not worried about meters at this point.
And when these go in, they're not going in with a meter.
Actually, remove the meter. We'll put what we're referring to as an idler tube, simply a short piece of pipe with a ball valve. And then, we'll put the assembly in. We'll anchor it to the ground. We'll assign it to that property. We'll test it. And then, the homeowners have to use that however they wish to use that water.
Okay. How do you bill for the usage?
We're not billing for the usage.
We're not. We're not for quite some time.
$21 a month deal?
Yep.
It's the same seal rate. We're not changing any of those fees. It's just the first cost to get it installed.
Okay.
So, that's the positive part of it. You can water as much as you want.
And we like that because...
Bill likes that.
We want to get water moving, right?
Right.
We need to get water moving for the health of the system.
Correct.
Right, so...
So, I have a bunch of questions.
Shoot.
Okay. So, I vaguely recall back in the early 2000s, there were backflow devices put into the system in various areas of the town. So, do individual meters no longer have backflow functionality, backflow prevention functionality?
So...
The backflows, I think, there's always...
If there's new construction, right, Jim? New construction requires...
Yeah, so backflow has, backflow prevention has evolved over the years. So, backflow prevention's actually been in for 50, 60, 70 years. I mean, check valves have been in place.
Right.
Very, very long time. So, but the requirements have changed and it's up to the water purveyor to institute the backflow or cross-connection control policy. And so, we've been evolving as of late. But, in 2011, we really got heavy with new construction because they were required to have a fire sprinkler system.
Right.
And so, then everything required a backflow prevention, all new construction, right?
Okay. So, my next question is, it's proposed in the staff report as an interim fee-based service. And so, at what point would it no longer be a fee we're asking customers to pay? Because I feel like it's...
So, there's only one fee associated with it. It's a one-time cost.
I know. That's not my question, though. At what point would that, we're saying it's an interim, which would indicate for a short time. It's not forever.
Yes.
So, at what point would that interim fee cease to exist?
So, that will be when we start metering again.
And we don't, and that's a good point. We don't have a deadline on this. So, maybe there needs to be a deadline of when that would be considered metered.
Right.
So, when we meter that, even though there's no construction there. Because right now, what we're doing, our assumption is until there's a house there, the interim water would continue to be available to that parcel.
Okay.
But, maybe we do need to put a deadline on when that interim water would cease and then you would be metered and have full service.
Right. We need to have potability for one. And the other, I think, too, when a house is actually constructed, it's up for final inspection and they're doing that, that could actually be, if we have potable water there, we've sampled the service line and everything's good there, then we could actually, that could become the permanent connection, especially if we're metered and everything at that point.
So, then that goes to my next thought is if it was going to become part of the permanent system, then it would seem to me that that would be a cost to PID that could be reimbursable by FEMA. And so, I would rather us get money from FEMA than to pass costs of, this is a significant amount of money for someone. $546 is a lot of money for someone who was underinsured to get water back to their property. And I would rather see us get reimbursement from the feds versus out of our residents' pockets.
Yeah. And we'll fight for that. It's just, it's one that's still out there that we don't know the answer to because it's a standards upgrade under their...
Okay.
And so, we are asking for it. We could put in there that upon reimbursement, we could credit the customer.
Because what's the likelihood that you're going to go back and then take this equipment off the service line when the house gets rebuilt? I mean, you've said a couple times in your presentation that you think it would become part of the permanent service to that home.
The backflow, our goal is to have that backflow, even if we have to repair it by just replacing the gaskets and the seats and everything.
Right.
Because it's just a big chunk of brass with some valves. But, if we can take all those other parts out and put it back, it can stay there. So...
Right. There again, it seems it should be reimbursable.
Geez, you know, I read this, that 3/4 inches, and I'm down here, so we don't have to worry about paying anything.
Okay. And then, I have another question for you. On the table one, item number six, process results. So, I was just curious what's involved in processing of the results? Because we're charging for it and I just wasn't sure what that meant. And I'm sure if I do, if I'm asking these questions, I'm sure our regular customer like myself would ask the same.
When we do a backflow test, we actually have to record values and process that. And so, that's part of that test. So, we take test equipment out. We have a form that we fill out with the identification of the backflow device and assign that to that particular address, record the values, and then we process that through and put it onto our utility billing account software.
Okay. So, you said that you're going to take the meter off and install this piece of equipment, the backflow device. I forget how you referred to it, that...
It's an assembly.
Okay, the assembly. And so, with the meter being gone, then would we consider that on the customer's side of the service line or on the PID side of the service line?
It's still, it'd be on the customer's side because there is a blank that we is basically taking over from them.
We have an idler tube that is acting as a meter.
Okay.
What happens if your meter's running all right? My meter's working just fine.
Well, we don't know that.
Yes, do. I take water out.
Well, we know it's turned.
No, I turned it on.
We understand, but we want to get, we're under the assumption that all meters, no matter if they appear to be working just fine or not, based on either the depressurization, the heat of the fire being around that meter actually damaged the internal parts. And then, there's worry of contamination with the mass plastic based on it being...
When you look at a meter, actually, you can see that it appears to be working quite well. But, when you put it on a test bench, you can see that at the low, medium, and high flow rates, actually, it does fine at the high rates, which is normally not where we flow. And at the low flow rates, which is where we normally flow, it is vastly out of tolerance.
When you pressurized Neo Road, the meter had been left on and, or the water was on. So, I had several leaks. So, I went up and turned it off, went and fixed the leaks and turned it back on.
Yeah.
And watched the meter move. And I'm still, I'm watering my ornamentals and stuff around the trailer. I've planted trees and so forth with that water. And I appreciate the low price from the district, you know? I had never had such cheap water.
I was going to say, too, that these timeframes here are really, you know, not much. And I really appreciate you keeping the timeframe down to keep the customers' costs down because, you know, I know how things can go sideways when you're doing testing and things. And all of a sudden, you're into it for a couple hours or what have you. And so, thanks for... I mean, that looks great, actually. Thank you.
So, I agree with the solution. I don't agree with the cost. I feel like it needs to be reimbursed. We need to figure out a way to get it to be reimbursable by FEMA. And I think push, push, push. And I know you are. So, I feel that...
How about if we put in the policy that upon reimbursement, this will be credited back to their account?
I would be very comfortable with that.
And how about we put an interim timeframe of eight months? That gets us through the summer.
I would be fine with that. Because I really struggled when I saw this, that we're, when you look at the whole picture of the recovery, that I don't want to harm someone who is trying diligently to get back to the community because ultimately, nothing will come back. The hospital will never come back if we don't have the population and that all is contingent upon us having water.
Yeah, I appreciate that because the goal of that is to reach our customers' needs.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, I would move in to accept this proposal. Let me get the language in front of me.
I'll second it.
I didn't make my motion yet. Let me make my motion.
Wait, yeah.
Well, you're not going to read...
You need public comment?
Hold on. I'm not...
The other comments from the board?
I want to amend the motion after you get the motion made.
Lauren, you got something?
Thank you. Lauren Harvey. I arrived here in 1947. I say that because a lot of people are here with new fancy ideas and that kind of stuff. Pardon me. That was my Spanish speaking there. Things that come to my mind is, you have to put a backflow device on your faucet now. It's a little brass thing you screw on, costs about $10. Comes with a break-off screw and they put it on, they break it off and you no longer, it's tamper-proof, can't get it back off. Why wouldn't that work on a temporary basis? They're $10. That's pretty simple. It's air break, nothing happens. You can't go backwards from there. So, why wouldn't that work, one? Two is, you have to provide meters. And when you provide meters, if a backflow device is going to be good for the system, I say you have to have it in your meter, on your side of the meter, not on my side of the meter. You're the one charged with bringing me water. You're the one charged with making sure that that water's good to that meter. And you cannot do that, folks, as long as you use a plastic meter. Because I can put all the backflow devices I want on my side of the street. And if that plastic meter catches on fire, I guarantee you that you're going to have benzene and you're going to have my dog's urine and whatever else is around that box coming back into your system. So, it's, I'm sitting here and I'm getting angry thinking about it. I'm thinking, maybe I should go to my lawyer, I have one. And I'm thinking, maybe I should go to my lawyer because maybe the citizens of Paradise need to start a class action suit because you don't seem to understand what's going on here. You're putting in plastic meters that are absolutely, you can get rid of them with a big lighter. And if the system depressurizes, which is a fancy word for vacuum, and it sucks stuff in, you've wrecked the system. The thing it looks like to me that caused the whole problem in the first place is these plastic meters. Because a lot of them burnt down. And when they burnt down, plastic burns, it brings back fumes, it's directly at your pipe, it's the closest to your service line. Howdy, how smart do you have to be to think about how that polluted stuff? So now you're entertaining the idea of putting back another plastic meter and you want me to put a $500 brass check valve on my side of the line? Thank God, it would be good on my side, but what happens to your plastic meter still? You have not solved the problem, period. You've still got a plastic meter that can still burn without a check valve, so...
Lauren?
Can I just, can I temper your anger?
I'm not angry, I'm not angry. I'm just annoyed by the stupidity of what you're doing.
We're not, our idea is not to put plastic meters back in, so we are...
Well, thank God for that.
So there you go. Thank you. We're on the same page.
So, okay, so now you put back a brass meter. You want to protect your system, you should have a check valve on your side in that meter, pretty simple.
And we're driving together.
And I like, you know, I'm giving you two stars.
Thanks.
I was here, I was here when they voted you in and I was thinking to myself, quite frankly, shouldn't say this in public, but I was thinking to myself, here's another government person that's going to sit on a board. But you know what? You turned out to trick this old man, I'll tell you that. You asked some very, very good questions, thank God you're there, I just want to tell you that.
Well, thank you.
I really appreciate it a lot more than I did the night you got on. But, so, and I tell you that by way of a compliment, I mean that, you really, you're shining pretty good on this thing.
I appreciate that.
But when you replace these meters, if you guys want check valves, stick the check valve on your side, then you know it's there, you don't have to worry about it. But if you, but these temporary ones, what's wrong with a $10 little screw-on thing? Just pick it up there, screw it on, break the little knob off, and you're done. You're satisfied, there's not going to be any back coming in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, appreciate it.
What do you call it then, 1552 Forest Service, currently no house there or meter of any type. I really appreciate your amendment to the thing and I hope it doesn't go haywire. I'm forming up my foundation right now and I've already talked to Kevin and I'll fill out the form, I'll write the check right now. I need the water for construction. Yeah, I want to be home for Christmas. So all of this other rhetoric, you know, we got a tough situation with our water supply is compromised. So the new building codes is I got to put a sprinkler in and that's direct water, that's no step-down depressur, what do you call it? You know, it's not house water, that's a direct line. And so everybody is going to need a backflow device that builds a new house after the meter. It's just part of the deal. If we can get reimbursed, fine. The fact I had to pay $7,000 for a survey for the town of Paradise, I'm willing to pay, and I understand there are people that are underinsured or not insured. I feel for them, but that's, you know, as a responsible person, if you own a home, buy some insurance, you know? And this is, I need this, or it's going to cost me a lot more money. So I really hope that the amendments are, I think what you suggested is really, really advantageous. I think that'll work for everybody. Hope Bill's amendment to the amendment isn't too crazy, you know? But, and the one inch and half inch, it doesn't matter, I mean, you know, whatever, you know? It's like, let's get, let's get our town built. So I encourage all of you to vote yes for this thing. I'll write a check and the meeting's over.
Thanks, Woody, appreciate it. Again, do you have anything else you would like to inform us with?
I don't think so. I would address Director Boston, there is to the cost of this. We did look at that and we wanted to spread it and that was one of the things in the policy that the board would look at, right? Is spreading that, making that cost easier.
Right.
So, and I know that I've spoke to customers and they were very appreciative of that.
No, I think that was a great, it's a great plan. I think it was, had good forethought that for some people, $546 or more is a lot of money and that's, being able to spread it is a good plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate the information. George, do we have a second on this motion?
I haven't even needed it.
Oh.
I have to make the motion.
Oh, you didn't complete your sentence.
I didn't complete, okay, so I'm going to hopefully not botch it completely. So I would move to approve to add interim water supply fee-based services to district operations to include fees as described in the cost of service analysis interim water supply with the ability to credit the customer upon reimbursement by, I'm just going to say reimbursement.
Perfect.
Because that way...
Yep, good.
To be credited back to the customer and with a timeline for this interim fee to be no more than eight months.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
There won't be any amendments because amendments was what she just said.
Motion passes, thank you.
Motion.
Thank you for that.
One other thing on the agenda.
We're on C now, is that correct?
Fire flow, that one's back on, Jim.
So the residential fire flow test is actually something that the district participated in since about 2012. So it was one of the questions that was brought forth by fire sprinkler designers that said, man, we know the pressure and we can make some assumptions, but we really need to know flow and service line size and main size and pressures. And there's other information that they really wanted to know. And so the town did fire flow tests for commercial and they would do it for residential, like a manufactured home that's going to be installed because it was about distance from the fire hydrant and a minimum flow at that fire hydrant. But we're talking about residential fire sprinkler systems that are designed beyond the meter. So in about, I think it was 2012, it's been a little while back, but about 2012, Neil, Esslin, and myself developed a apparatus and a program to actually give flow tests at the parcel, at the meter service connection or somewhere close by if there wasn't one existing, if it was a new service. So we would simulate or get very close to that. But we literally remove the meter, hook up our test equipment, and then we take a pressure, static pressure and flow test at that meter service connection and we provide that to the owner, the owner's representative, so that they can give it to the fire sprinkler designer and they have enough information to design a fire sprinkler system. So we were not able to do that right after the fire because of, I mean, kind of obvious reasons, I think, right? So one is, we didn't have water in water mains for quite a while. Of course, we do now in most places, so we can start this back up. The fire sprinkler designers have been getting a pressure range from me in a pressure zone, so they would submit a request to the town. The town would email me with the address and other pertinent information. I would look at, in some cases, I could use a hydraulic model or historic data. Or we literally would have to go out and measure hydrants in certain areas. It's time-consuming and it's not overly accurate. It's very difficult for a fire sprinkler designer because they have to make some assumptions and those assumptions are sometimes not advantageous to our customers because if you're making assumption, you're going to want to err on the side of caution. So instead of a three-quarter inch meter, maybe you go to a one-inch meter and if a customer has a three-quarter inch meter right now, there's a capacity fee difference in there. So we want to get back to the point where we're giving them very specific information and the information they need to design these systems. It benefits our customers, it helps us too because then we can identify and recover some of those meter locations so that we can also, and remember on both of these, we can, we won't necessarily absolutely do it every time, but we can include it in part of the sampling recovery process when we're able to, right? So that's the idea behind this. And there is obviously time involved with the office and with field crews in order to be able to pull this off. So we want to just capture those exact costs using labor, equipment, material, and overhead. And so that's what the cost of service analysis is based on.
Actually, did a little research and just checked around and it was, Calwater charges significantly more, so I was pleased to see the rate that we were going to propose to charge.
Jim, do you actually have the time to be doing this now?
So we do and we will even more because we're going to be relinquishing the recovery duties and projects, right, to mutual aid and perhaps contractors. And that's what I stated earlier on the last presentation was, we need to get back to the business of serving our customers and doing our permanent work and those mitigation on the recovery part allows us to do just this.
So this, this could actually save us, I mean, if we discovered that there was enough pressure and flow through, say, a three-quarter, that we didn't have to just err on the side of caution and change out that whole lateral.
Right, I think there's a couple thousand dollar difference between the meter side capacity fee to you and if you're going in to do the service line, I mean, there's some costs associated with that. And so it's definitely one of those, let's prove this thing out one way or another and then at least we'll all know what we need to do. Instead of kind of just, you know, drawing the dart, well, it's just a high side there. And it'll help us collect data too for what's going on in our system now and help waterworks engineers design our hydraulic model and have real-life data out there to use for that. Because our pressures right now, frankly, are higher. We don't have the users out there, so the demand isn't there, so the pressures are going to increase some. Where and how that does, we don't know that right now, but, so there's a lot of benefit to being able to go back out there and do that again.
Go ahead, Lauren, you got a question, got something else to say?
Thank you, Lauren Harvey. You already know when to come here. Three things that I'm thinking about. Your flow test is bogus. And here's why, here's why it's bogus.
What's bogus?
Bogus, your flow test.
Your flow test is bogus?
Not accurate.
Yeah, it's not accurate. That's why it's not accurate. Because I live on a street, everybody knows where I live, I live at the corner of Diamond and Sapphire. You guys got a six-inch main goes down my personal driveway. But they did a flow test for the person across the street, so you have that information for one, for mine, when it was active, because you got the test at my spigot, my first spigot on the meter. So you have that for me anyway, but that's not my point. My point is, if there is no houses on the line, we've all turned on a garden hose, we've all put a Y on the end of it, and we've all drained two waters out of one garden hose and we realize the pressure drops and the flow drops. So here's my point. If those houses up my street are not using water, my flow test is going to be a lot better because they're not sucking no water off that two-inch pipe that's coming down my street. So your flow test, unless you have other people drawing water ahead of you or below you, the flow test is not accurate to any degree because as those houses build back on, they will use part of that water and you'll be siphoning it off the end of your 50-foot garden hose more down at the other end. Do you understand that or is that too complicated for you? But, so the flow test right now means nothing because you haven't got, you haven't got people taking baths, washing dishes and stuff as you're doing that flow test, which is what would normally happen because you'd normally have, you know, grandma's up here running her dishwasher and I'm down here running my washing machine because I went to work and I turned it on and, you know, you don't have those sort of scenarios going on now because you've got one house on my street. So he's going to flow good because you're supplying a two-inch line to one house. You know, I mean, you don't got to be a brainchild to think about it. So I don't understand the, I don't understand the flow test thing right now because you can't prove it's accurate. So that, and the flow test does not take into account for carbuckles, I'm going to call them that, you can call them what you want. The inside of all these pipes filled up with junk in. I know you inject the stuff that keeps the metal from rusting and all that, I understand all that, but if you, when they broke open my six-inch concrete pipe going down my line because the garbage truck broke the valve, drove over the valve and broke the valve, so they had to get it out, fix it. And by the way, they did an excellent job and worked fast, so while I'm here, I'll tell you that. But the point is, that six-inch pipe is actually only about three inches when you look at it now. It was there when I moved in in 72, 73. So it's been there, yes, it's been there a long time, but that pipe is actually only about three inches. So you're going to, you're going to come to my house or any other customer here in town and you're going to say, you're going to test it and you're going to say, my flow's not good enough. But you also are not taking into account, your service pipe to my meter has got carbuckles in it and we know that, or whatever you want to call the obstruction that's in the pipe over the years has been there. So I say, before you can take a flow test at my house or any other man's house or any other woman's house or any other child's house in Paradise, you ought to have to prove that you're actually supplying what I'm supposed to have. Because if I've got, if I've got a three-inch pipe from the street to my meter and it's been there more than eight, 10 years or so, we all, folks, we all know what that looks like. So your flow test is not done accurately, one, and the other thing is, you haven't supplied what you said you're going to supply. If you had a one-inch pipe coming to my meter, you no longer have a one-inch pipe coming to my meter. So if you're going to test me for flow, I want you to prove you've got a one-inch pipe coming to my meter. Because we all know it's got carbuckles or whatever you want to call them inside it because I've seen your good pipes. So I'd like you to think about that before you go to import some flow rates on people that have it. And, yeah, I was underinsured a little bit, but I can tell you this. I bought a new truck, I bought a new fifth wheel of cash for, I ever got any insurance money, and I owned my property outright before the fire ever happened. I had no notes. So whatever I got in the bank now, which is close to a half million bucks, is mine. So, yeah, but I still don't want to spend it for no damn reason at all. So, but think about your, think about your, if you're going to do flow rates and you're going to do all that, think about what you're actually supplying. And do I have to make up for the fact that your pipe is all plugged up already because it's been there so many years? Is that, is that what you're really saying to the public? You're really saying, we're not going to test our end, we don't care if we've got a quarter-inch line down there, if you flunked, that's it. You see what I mean? Looks like to me what you're trying to do is get the public to cut out your service fees to my meter and me to pay to put them in new when you know they're all plugged up.
Lauren, I'd hope to get out of here at noon.
So I'll make my explanation really quick then. So fire sprinkler systems for residential homes are designed for the home, not for the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay, that's the simple fact of it. We will provide data about the main size and the main material and the service line and the service, so the fire sprinkler designer will take that into account. Now, we have a model, so we know what we should have for expected flows. This isn't just something that happened after the fire, we've been doing this for years. We'll flow it. If we suspect that there's something wrong with the PID service line or the PID water main, we'll investigate that. We have done that and we repaired it and we've provided the capacity to serve. We always will. That's our job.
Yeah, and there's industry standards for the age and type of pipe and the type of obstructions that you're actually talking about. So you can look at a chart, you can say, if that pipe's 50 years old, you know, this is, and that's how we were prioritizing when we were doing pipeline replacement and that's, it's all tied together, so...
I was a licensed building inspector for over 10 years, I held the US partner code, I got the whole thing and I've got charts, I understand all that. But I'm still saying, the fact that the pipe gets corroded inside stops the flow, which means that my three-quarter inch pipe, if that's what's there, would fail now and you'd say, well, you need to put in a one-inch pipe. But maybe I don't, maybe the three, a clean three-quarter with a pass is what I'm saying.
Yeah, Jim.
And that's what I was addressing, right? If we don't have that, we fix it and it's done.
Right, right.
Well, then you fix them all because none of them clean.
Okay.
Can I call the question?
Uh, okay, any other, any other comments?
How about me making a motion?
Very good, go ahead, Bill.
I move to approval to include the cost of a service fee amount of $132.90 to the PID schedule of fees and charges for the residential fire flow test program.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Carry you, Mark.
All right, I think... All right. I think that ends the meeting.
For your adjournment.
Thank you for the, uh, comments from the public. Thank you very much.
Close to, close to fifteen minutes. Speaking of checks, I have some for you to sign.
Bill, I know what you were trying to say.
January third.
January third for the interim. So Woody's question is, but we don't have any, it's coming Monday morning.
Thank you for your kind comments.
I, I understand.
You know, you can be mad at me later.
Oh, sure.